Here they come. That's awesome.
5:00 PM, welcome. Curtis.
How come I didn't get a book?
Oh.
We don't have our books.
I don't know why I, you know, did I get something?
Luke Colman, Luke Colman meeting to order for life in hours. Board of Trustees meeting on February 25th at factory Pastor Glenn's office. And it said 5:02 PM. Well, first is the call to order and then I'll go around the table and we'll introduce ourselves. We can start, Wayne.
Wayne Berry. Ben Smith, Council to KLPD.
Anna Henderson, General Manager.
Bob Georgias, Trustee.
Bob Emmons, Trustee.
Matt Rancourt, Finance Director.
Curtis Miles, a trustee.
Beverly Florian Rice, Trustee President. First agenda item is executive session. And I'll make a motion to move to go into executive session in accordance with one MRS, paragraph 4056E to confer with council. Second.
Second.
Good.
Matt, is he in the meeting?
Um, he's been authorized to stay.
Then he needs to be included in the motion.
All right, okay.
He needs to be included in the motion.
For?
I see you.
All right. All right, so then in adding on to that motion and that Matt Rancourt will stay in for the executive session.
Second.
Second by Bob, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five, one, zero, and so. We are coming out of the executive session of in accordance with one MRS, paragraph 4056E, and there's no action taken. We've added one person to our table here and it's Duncan Wentworth.
Yes.
And we will go down to the next part of the agenda. It's part three, KLPD Security System Upgrade. And on that particular executive session, I'll make a motion to go into executive session again with one MRS, paragraph 4056F to discuss critical electric infrastructure information. Do I have a second?
Second.
Bob Emmons is a second.
And you're including.
And I'm sorry, at the end of the wording, I've been, and I'm including the two individuals in that motion that Matt Rancourt, Financial Director, and Duncan Wentworth will be in that meeting.
We have a second. Second.
Seconded, okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's five, zero, and we will pass six, 12, we will go into executive session again.
You might have to flick it back on your.
Oh, yeah, well, that's just.
Oh, well, that's.
Just so we can see what's going on.
What you moved to the meeting.
Okay, you're all, you're all set, Beth.
Matt?
Yes.
Yes, all set.
We're coming out of executive session and for the executive session goes for MRS, paragraph 4056F to discuss critical electric infrastructure information. I'll go ahead and make a motion coming out of that meeting to move to authorize payment for the security system replacement and upgrade not to exceed $90,000.
Second.
Seconded by Bob Emmons.
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
Yes, there is. I would like first to formally and compliment Duncan Wentworth on his presentation and his topic. Thank you. And I would also like to compliment the General Manager for clearly delegating the responsible, responsibility to someone who is competent and enthusiastic about it. So it's very impressive both of you have done a great job.
Thank you.
A lot of people would not want to micromanage things, but really appreciate when I see it managed correctly. Thank you. Thank you.
Comments or questions? So we'll go to a little fan, motions on, uh, move to authorize payment for security system replacement and upgrade not to exceed $90,000.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five, zero, let's vote. We'll move on to number four, which is the January 2025 Operating Report. That's tab number orange in your books.
I don't have a book.
Oh, I'll let you.
That's all right. I'll, I'll work on with you. Thank you.
What were you, what kind of do this kind of quickly moving along here? And I'm sorry when I came out of the meeting, I didn't say that it was 7:10 PM. All right, there are three, four sections on this. The first one is on customer service. If you've had a question on these, these are sent out to the public as well as to the trustees. Does anyone have any question on customer service? Okay, then we'll move down to the second section, which is administration. If you have any questions, please tell which letter it is so that we can address it and everyone look at the same, at the same time.
One comment with the completion of the response to RFD for NOAA included under administration. Oh, January, I'm sorry. You're right. There were much.
Okay?
Yep.
On all of that?
I have a question on two B.
Yes.
We said you had investigated T-Mobile, I see you investigate yourself. We know the different locations of T-Mobile other than Weather Hill. So that information is available when they gave a presentation on tower proposal over here, they gave all the coverage. I can send you the PDF on where, who's got why and where.
And I just, a comment on that, I generally looked at the maps, but I'm a little bit of a skeptic when it comes to their coverage maps and I wanted to actually see.
Oh, yeah.
Well, it's the companies, it's the companies telling you what they're covering, right? That's the first level of skepticism. If you have any questions, you can talk with Steve Sawyer because when we were doing the connectivity investigation, we went around and tested. There was a special software code that we get in, you could tell how strong the signals were. Very surprised at that. And Steve has on that.
Okay. Any other questions on that one? Oh, I kind of looked down at C and just wanted was question number C. Are there significant changes to the PUC program?
They're considering some significant changes to YAP, which would increase the complexity of those administrative programs. So they were, um, you know, the nature, primarily the nature of their questions for the consumer owned utilities was can you accommodate these changes? They also asked for some ideas, but you know, bottom line is I'm not advocating for any additional administrative burden or complexity with the program. Our customers have not been vocal about complaints on benefits they receive. You know, it is not an insignificant amount of, they're talking about changing to a rate based distribution of benefits versus right now it's a lump sum payment. So that would just make it really complex for us. We don't have the software to accommodate, so I filed comments to that.
I appreciate you making comments on behalf of the great peers.
Thank you.
On that. All right, then we'll go on to the next section.
Now, D, is there anything we should know about on the, on the staff for me?
No, not that. Talking about projects that were pre-starting projects primarily, a little bit about the self-power operation issues. It was coordinating.
Any other questions on this section of administration? We will go to the next section, take over. Number three, under operations, any questions?
Does this mean this A mean we're halfway done?
We're over halfway. We have 7,500.
Seventy hundred.
Total.
Questions on that section? Ben, down to finance? If you want to have any questions on that one.
I do have a question on, it's more of a general question on, um, I'll, I'll take it up with you separately.
Okay.
And under A, we're going to be posting a customer service position?
We are, and it is posted. It is posted on our website on, and that while we did not get a lot of interest or applicants from those two avenues, so we posted it on Indeed and we got a whole bunch. So we're working on energies this week.
Indeed.
Indeed, okay.
Cool.
All right, that'll take care of the operations section. Okay, then we'll go ahead and move on. Then we're going to go into other business. I, there is an additional one that is not listed on here. I'm going to turn to Anna and we're just going to move that to the top of the list as we move on here.
Thank you. So I have asked the President if I could add an agenda item today. It was brought to my attention that we need more meters on hand to finish the metering project. Part of that, Duncan, correct me if I mispeak, but the genesis of the shortage that we have now comes from our initial order amount. And we did not build into the order any plans for growth. So we've had lots of growth in the system. I also am not sure that we had it mapped out exactly how many of the specific meter types that we would need. We had a pretty good general idea of the meters that we needed for the whole system, but not the details of how many meters in each category. So we need to ask for, it's another $90,000 for a meter purchase to complete the project and have a sufficient number on hand for inventory. But the meter purchase will also be an annual, maybe not annual cadence, but certainly an amount built into the annual budget to make sure that our inventory level stays sufficient. So this is not the last time you look at a request for a meter order. That's what we need to do. And can you speak to quantity?
Yep, so built into this order is approximately 240 bread and butter house meters. They're four S. We were about 100 short in total on the original E order. That being said, two or three years ago, whenever they were ordered, they were probably right on the money for numbers. But as you know, construction is happening and meters are going out left and right. So that is where that factors in and it also is also planning future construction this year and half of next year. If it continues at the current rate approximately. It also is factoring in, or not that one, but I'm also in the order have 80, I believe it was 80, 12 S meters. 12 S meters are what we use for metering three-phase setups at the residential level. So any of your big apartment buildings such as like Cousins School or the one on Park Street, those are all 12 S meters. Those are going to be, or the reason for the order for that is in preparation for potential development down off Route One. That is a three-phase line that goes through there and it'd be fed off all three phases due to the size of it.
That's all, isn't it, not 2,000?
Yep. So that is in preparation for that. The reason why we're doing this now is because the lead time on all meters across the board is at least 30 weeks as we speak. 30 weeks? 30 weeks. There are also a couple of other forms in there, four S, eight S, and nine S, and it's one box of each of those. The reason for that is because the Honeywell poly-phase meters that we originally ordered, when they were ordered, they can only, they're one channel meter. And what that means is they can only bring back one measurement as far as what it's recording in its recorder. That transfers into, we now have a three-phase net metering site. Our current meters, even the new ones, are not able to do that because I cannot bring back delivered and I cannot be received in the same year. What I'm, to overcome that, I've found an older landising gear meter that I'm able to program for that to put in until we can get a new one that can handle a solar setup. So that is why one box of each of those in a box is four meters.
So to paraphrase what you said, you didn't anticipate a three-phase net energy billing customer with a solar facility installed and so.
Correct.
We found the workaround.
Yep.
But you need.
It is, it is a manual meter that, just like the old dial meters, but it's digital. It can't connect up with us in our metering system. It's just a very basic meter that I was able to make work.
When we got the initial delivery of the meters, this, this not the last batch, but this particular brand of meters, we had a problem at the very beginning. Did we get full replacement value or full replacement product on?
Full replacement product.
Okay, and it's working?
Yep. So that is, those were the, I forgot which ones were. But yes, those all got replaced and have been returned to us. So right now we're, we have no more shipments coming from ED. Okay, we're all caught up as far as that goes.
These are agents?
Uh, Itron meters with an ED communication board in them. The caveat to the Itron meters is we've had some hiccups with them. They're, uh, some of them are not reading at all. Some of them are just dying. I'm not really sure why. In, in that case, I am processing those and sending them back to get fixed and or replaced and sent back to us. The new meters are about $33 more per meter because it is a different brand. And talking with other utilities across the country, they have not had any issues that I've had with that brand meter.
John, warranty on the meters that we?
Eighteen months.
Of the ones that we have on hand. What about this new meter?
I don't know what the warranty is on them. I would assume it's similar because it's through ED. But they are, they are being very good at processing them because they're brand new meters.
Okay, so we determine, you order any credit and you're getting that back?
Yep, so I actually send them to another, a third-party company to get fixed, tested, and then sent back to us.
Oh, and they're reworking?
Yep.
And the reworks have been working?
Yeah, a lot of them are solder connections, loose connection boards, and they're trying, and then the ones that aren't registering any kilowatt hours, they're still trying to figure out what's going on with those. But I do have an open line of communication with the Army Department through ED and we're following up every so often.
You did a great job, Mike. I appreciate that very much. You know you're on top of this.
Trying, yes.
Do you need a motion then on this because of the dollar amount? Yes.
Same, same motion as the security process. But we're, we're doing meter inventory.
Okay. So then. Okay, I'll make a motion to authorize payment for a meter.
Additional meters.
Addition, just additional meters. Okay, I'm, I'll start over again. I'll make a motion to authorize payment for additional meters not to exceed a dollar amount of $90,000.
Second.
Okay.
So Curtis seconds.
Moved and seconded by Curtis. Any other questions, discussion? We'll take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is unanimous, five, zero. Move forward on that. All right, then we'll go ahead to A, running down to your new business.
Yes, and Duncan, if you're, you're welcome to stick around and you're welcome to escape if you need to go.
Escape.
I can, I can hang out for a little bit. I'll wait till the meter stuffs down.
So this is pertinent to Duncan's area. You pull up a draft, ladder.
We're going to A, metering equipment.
So a little background on this. I.
Not anymore.
We kicked off the metering project. We kicked off the metering project in 2023. We have received some requests from customers to keep an analog meter because they do not want to upgrade to the new technology. This was not addressed when the project was kicked off. There was some information relayed to me by customers that there were discussions with the prior General Manager on this, but it was my understanding that no decision had been made internally, just communication through the General Manager expressing an interest. And what people call this is opt-out. I'm not calling it that. I think it's, it's our customers requesting certain meter, you know, brands or models or capability. My recommendation is that we not allow customers to choose their meter type. And there's precedent for that in the industry. We have the PUC law that supports our position that essentially says that the utility gets to choose what type of equipment it uses to provide service and the customers have to allow access to their property to provide that service. And if they don't, then our recourse is this connection. So I'm obviously not proposing that at this point, but I do need to be responsive to the customers that have asked to be able to choose their metering equipment. So I wanted to bring that to your attention to get your feedback if you have any before I proceed. But my intent would be to send a letter to the customers I have asked, notifying them of, you know, the benefits that we get from the program, open the dialogue. But at the end of the day, we don't have the ability to, to allow customers to select the type of equipment that they want to use in order for us to provide them service. That also affects the benefits that we get from the metering system. It cuts down on operational cost, liability. The operational value that we get from it is huge. With analog meters, we have no visibility into outages, so it's very manual. With the new meters, we know whether it's a single customer out or a whole subdivision, so it's really beneficial for troubleshooting operations. So I do not intend to, my, my policy position for the utility is that we do not allow opt-outs or selection of equipment.
You know, to kind of cut to the chase here, it seemed to be very difficult in technology to have lots of different meters out there. It means that Duncan would have to be an expert in all these technologies. And second, as you pointed, there's a very strong benefit to knowing that they're out using a system that you're proposing. So there really are those two problems. One is the additional cost of having an expert in servicing meter that we don't know anything about. And the other is the benefit to them. So I, I mean, to me, this is kind of a, kind of a, you know, it's very odd request. I thought that, you know, they want analog meters or they just want to choose. Are they concerned about the RF frequencies? That's one of it.
That, we don't ask why the customers are making the request and what their rationale is for making the request, but I'm, I'm aware of a lot of concerns about the RF, but the.
There's no data to support that.
The PUC has.
So, I mean, we're kind of in the same position with streetlights, you know, making, yes. I mean, if it doesn't make, if, if we just can't operate the utility efficiently by giving everybody the option to choose whatever equipment they want. And I think writing, crafting a letter in that way that both focuses on the benefit to them and also the difficulty in running utility, where everybody can choose equipment and the additional costs that they and that would incur. Yeah, so I think the letter has to be crafted with, it has both benefits to them and, and ultimate cost of utility, which is passed on to repairs.
Are we, I mean, huge numbers are very few numbers of people.
I, there's, I believe around a dozen, a three. One dozen and two dozen, I'm sorry.
By all in the same neighborhood.
I don't think, so I think there are some numbers where, you know, the discussion can sway others around. I just wanted to add on to your comment about the cost and, you know, we just talked about meter inventory. We don't have a plan to stock these meters and it would require physically walking to a meter to meet it, which one of the big operational benefits is you don't have any liability associated with property damage or employee injury. Both of those would happen. Somebody slips on customer property, we have that to deal with. Or I had an issue with a broken latch on a gate, whatever, customer was upset with the property damage. So that's a minor example, but still.
But I think if you craft a letter with those two things in it.
The other thing that I might suggest is that ED has some brochure or insert material to also include in that, that does go down through the explanation and examples. That they are safe. You know, there was always that doubt whether they're safe, that the technology has advanced so much from what first started on meters.
And thank you for the suggestion. And I've identified a Department of Energy report on the 2016 timeframe because they funded a lot of grants for this project. So then they developed a white paper that talks about the benefits, you know, like the A meter. So that would also back up your comment.
As I'm talking to those set customers who are hesitant or don't want a meter, I've also been trying to educate and give out model numbers where to find the information. I think you all want to look up the model number and exactly what that meter is inside.
You don't see this rising to a level before the policy that.
But awareness and support for the position, if we have to, it will likely culminate in a PUC case or just inquiry, but I have pretty strong, you know. Well, I don't want to, I don't want to predict the future, but I, I feel like we have a good strong case.
And it extended to be noticed that they took any amendments to terms and conditions.
There are no amendments to terms and conditions at this point in time.
But what we do get there is if we want to.
I don't think we need at this point, the terms and conditions say that we get to decide what equipment we use to serve and you have to provide access. Those are the two rules that we have to, to exercise. I, I don't want to get to that point, but again, we do have, to Curtis's point about cost reduction, the benefits of the, to the utility as a whole and the economies of scale that we get from the system. I mean, that's the benefit of a consumer-owned utility is.
Cost reduction. But also to them, hey, we'll know, maybe even as soon as you do, your power's out.
I knew that happened on my street just after it was, the meter was in and so. And I called over and he said, oh, no, we already knew it. Immediately.
Go to CFP website. And I can tell that they're, I'm out of power, right? So it's a good thing. Very handy.
So we move on to the next one. Okay. B, A base meter sockets.
Yeah, this is another meter project issue that came up. So in the replacement process, we identified some of the meter bases that are not compliant with code. Very outdated, so they won't accept our meter. So I'm working with the town to send them a letter to let them know they own that equipment. It's their responsibility to upgrade it.
Oh, so it's the town not having the equipment?
No, it's, I'm involving the town because it's a code issue and I want to make sure we're coordinated. But I have, KLPD has the authority to, under its terms and conditions, to require their equipment be, and it's in the terms and conditions now that they have to be compliant with code. You know, it's, it's tough sometimes because code changes over time. So it's not like the code that changed last year were, you know, requiring people to upgrade. I'm pretty sure these A base meters have been in place since the 50s. So they're over 70 years old. So this is not a.
Would you characterize any of these people who will wait? Would you characterize any of these people as low income, can't afford an upgrade?
Not to my knowledge at this point, and I did ask.
Thinking about them, um, actually, the down one is the building that turned down. Another one's on someone's garage, their house has another one. I, I don't, I don't think there's any that, I, I, looking from the outside, that I would categorize as that. It's probably just something that's been overlooked for years and years and years and it's worked so badly.
And in some instances, I think they're aware and they're just waiting to be told that they're required to do it. I just wanted to let you know that I'm also sending letters to, but we have about six of them, so it's not a good, under customer, but they're going to get a letter as well that they have to upgrade the equipment by a certain time. We need to upgrade the meter.
Or remove it.
Yeah. They do not want.
Service.
Any questions on that or concerns or interesting?
We want to see about the NOAA grant application stats update.
I just wanted to let you know that that was filed. It did get accepted into the system, so now we're just waiting on their review process. I have not heard that the funding has been fold or compromised by any recent federal activity, but.
You know what's going to happen.
I know NOAA was trying to, um, make things as clean as they could for, for supplying for a grant and make sure the money was.
Well, the one thing is already that appropriate to use grants. I'm still just saying it's already that appropriate, it's really obvious, okay? So the question is just a matter of whether there's, it's going to be able to continue slower on it.
So we're in the queue.
We're in the queue, but I think there's going to be a delay, I think.
So like you want to compliment that, that you received a letter, uh, and reaching out to Senator Collins. And so that's wonderful that they were supporting our project, our application.
May come in handy if the funding is somehow delayed, to be able to remind the state, remind them, hey, you supported this, but it looks like things have gone awry.
This is fair.
What's that?
This is fair. It's a Noah. So.
And the, and the big thing is that Senator Collins is chairman of the appropriations committee.
Yes. Very good.
I like that signature.
Secure that support. And that they're knowledgeable before it comes, before this comes out. Great, excellent on that. Okay, we have no public comment here? No one? Okay, uh, we'll go down to the next one. The date of the next regular board meeting is March twenty-fifth. For everyone. And so, uh, do I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
All right.
I'll second that.
All right. Bob E. and Bob G. Move and second it, all in favor to adjourn?
All right.
Aye.
All right.
Seven forty PM.